Is there anybody from the public that wants to speak on anything in the public hearing? We'll go in a regular session. All right, say none. Nicole is the red alert mayor council meeting board. Everybody would please stand for the pledge. Aye. The pledge is made through the five of United States of America. If you want to vote for the petition, one may change it under your vote. You can raise your hand if you remember the meeting. All right, thank you going to roll ball please, Mayor Secretary.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Dudley.
Here.
Councilmember Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Turley.
Here.
Councilmember Dillaplane.
Here.
City Manager Loveland.
Here.
Finance Wyandotte Gray. City Solicitor Landon.
Here.
Police Chief Henderson.
Here.
City Secretary Paganis President.
All right, have you? Aren't going to have some final minutes of your previous meeting? Any additions, corrections, changes? Now enter team motion before, um, May nineteenth.
I move to be accepted minutes from May nineteenth as written.
My second.
All right, motion second approved in minutes and written form. Any further discussion? None, all is a favor.
Aye.
Poked. All right, motion carried. Going to the uh, please report chief commissioner.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, council, city staff, and those in attendance. Like to present the police report for the month of May. Look at our crime view map on page one, starting in the uh, upper center there in the dark purple. That is a fraud complaint. Victim had money taken from their checking account. We initiated initiated the investigation, turned it over to their banking institution, and took care of it, and reimbursed them with money. Uh, the red R is a rape. There's actually two. That's because the county was dispatched first, the AI hospital. Uh, then realized it occurred in our jurisdiction. I'll touch on that in significant events. The orange pinpoint below that to the left is an aggravated assault. I'll touch that, touch on that in significant events. And you, towards the center of the page, the green disorderly conduct was a phone harassment. Actually, it was a Facebook Messenger harassment. The person ceased contact after we got involved. And there was a noise complaint. Uh, below that, the headphones, the green pinpoint with the headphones. That was a neighbor complaining about another neighbor. The county actually came in and it occurred around six fifty-one PM. We just didn't have coverage that particular night. Below that is another disorderly conduct. That was a phone harassment between two adults and uh, the contact ceased after we're involved again. Below that is a larceny from building. And that was, I'll put it here. I believe that was that's from, that's from a uh, another bank account and still being investigated by their banking institution. And finally, at the bottom was a noise complaint. That's an ongoing issue. I'm working with the park management on that one. You go to the second page. Our May calls for service. See our highlighted crime view incidents. The busiest day was Friday. At the busiest time. It was thirteen hundred, one PM. There's actually a three-way tie there. And then we had eighty-five May incidents, uh, as opposed to fifty-nine in May of twenty-four. That's an increase of forty-four percent. As we touched on before, a lot of times it's car stops are considered incidents. Then for total incidents, we're at three hundred and thirty-two at the end of May. That's up twenty-seven point two percent from May of twenty twenty-four. We had forty-four traffic arrests, eight abandoned vehicle and traffic warning. Uh, one crime prevention check. Fourteen crime reports, thirty-three field service reports, one accident. That was a property damage hit and run, I believe. And seven criminal arrests. Officer Webb investigated a child abuse case where the mother dropped off her eight-year-old at a family member's residence who was not at home at the time. The child went to that neighbor's for assistance and Newcastle County Police were contacted as the abandonment was in their jurisdiction. We assumed the investigation and it was learned that the victim sustained injuries from the mother prior to abandoning her. The eight-year-old was treated for minor injuries and her thirty-five-year-old mother was arrested for child abuse, fourth degree, and endangering the welfare of the child. She was released on unsecured bail in order to have no unlawful contact with the juvenile victim, who was relocated to a family member. And Officer Wi- Officer First Class Williams handled the sexual abuse of a twelve-year-old juvenile. Where the suspect was the thirty-one-year-old step-parent. Charges included rape, fourth degree, less than sixteen. Sexual abuse of a child by a person of trust and a dangerous crime against a minor under fourteen. Suspect was issued a total bail of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars cash in order to have no contact with the alleged victim or anyone under the age of eighteen. Subject was transported to Howard Dome Correctional Institution and go to bail. And I assisted the Georgetown Police Department who had active warrants on a Delaware city resident. Their incident included several weapon charges, trespassing, and a violation of a no contact order. Suspect was arrested, processed, and arraigned at our department and received a total cash bail of two hundred and forty thousand dollars. They too were transported to the Howard Dome Correctional Institute. Attached to our usual report is a traffic study. We borrowed a speed sign from the Castle County Police that actually captures data. Surprisingly, we usually look at the eighty-fifth percentile. So the speed on Clinton Street at Second Street is where we set it up, heading eastbound. The eighty-fifth percentile speed was twenty-three point zero two, and the average speed was eighteen point three two. Now, so much we left the display up because it was an issue. People were complaining. So they'll obviously see the sign, but a lot of times we have the speed captured beforehand. Then it has a bar graph. The second page of this actually breaks down each hour of the day. The study was from May twenty-ninth to June fifth. And it showed you each hour of the day. The total vehicles during that time was six thousand seven hundred and ninety-two. That's heading one way. So those numbers are something for us to go off of. We are looking in, the city manager actually found a grant where we're possibly purchasing our own sign. It's a mobile sign where you can move it around to uh, different regular street signs and attaches, and it can record the data. Also has, we can put up our own messages on it. We're looking into that. Hopefully we'll have that soon to utilize. Then uh, Thursday the twelfth, Officer Williams responded to Delaware's video, uh, the topic on social media. We were notified by the fire department earlier in the evening that there was parking, overflow parking in their parking lot. So Officer Williams was on alert. Uh, she then noticed the crowd got very, very large. I understand, I don't know the total number. I understand fifteen, twenty police cars were here from Newcastle County and DSP. It was only because Officer Williams called for backup. She was the only one working. And when you hear large crowds, two, three hundred, that's what happens. Thankfully, they send the cavalry, so. It took a while to get them dispersed. Um, it was a party. You have to make sure people leave there safely. I know, I understand there were some not-so-happy residents, but really, the owner of the property actually responded and assisted. And the violations, there's nothing anybody could have done about it. I know people aren't happy with that property, but I know they have strict rules. They just can't be here every minute of their event that they're running out of their establishment to. We haven't been out there. We've been out there for some dial radios when they do have parties. Luckily, this could have went south with three hundred people, even with twenty officers in there. That bottle's thrown at me and stuff like that. Luckily, it didn't. And hopefully, we don't ever experience that. Well, I was very, very young and on the street, and Newcastle County had repeat calls for service. And we just had to go there. We would go to your residence and say, why are we out here three, four times this month? And an elderly woman told me one time, "Son, when I need the police, I'll call them, and you'll come." And I learned pretty quickly. I understand what the county was trying to do, but when we're needed, we'll come. We've been here for events. It happens. So hopefully, it doesn't ever happen again, but it probably will, so. Any questions on any of that?
All right, any, any questions for the chief?
Um, the increase in incidents. Are we actually having more incidents? Or are we just catching up to more?
I think, I can do a break. I think it's uh, we're more consistent writing tickets. So every traffic stop gets a case number and is considered an incident. I don't see any, any spike in any concern.
Is there a curfew uh, in effect, and what time is it?
Ten, ten PM, please correct.
Ten AM?
Ten PM.
Is it year-round or seasonal?
Year-round.
Okay, thank you.
And if, that was another thing's been on social media. You see you when I was out and about. Call nine-one-one, call an office. I've seen complaints about that on social media. We eliminated our admin. I didn't feel that we needed an admin sitting in our building. Ten, if you get ten calls at our police department, four of them were for Ohio, Delaware City, Ohio. Three others are for some other agency in Delaware. And then the two others are, are soliciting for us to buy something from the police, or the police department to buy something. So we eliminated that. Actually replaced us, administrator, the police administrator with lieutenant, a retired troop. So called, at least call our, or call nine-one-one. Always count on our office. I don't think you as taxpayers want our officers sitting in the building at nine o'clock in the night. You're not going to get an officer there.
So should we just one, if it's, if it's um, you know, anything complaint-driven non-mercy, should we just send them to the five-seven-three-two-eight-hundred number?
Yeah, preferably the five-seven-three-two-eight-hundred, but that's been ingrained in us for years. Just call nine-one-one. It goes to the same call taker. And I worked at the county. What's frustrating here is I'm going to so many petty complaints with Newcastle County that there's stuff here that is justifiably reportable and the residents don't report. We have to read on Facebook, and I've told my officers, "Stop looking at Facebook. You're done." But we have to. That's how we base all of our patrol work off of, because no one calls in. The solicitor, no one ever called the police department. No one even called the office during day work. But uh, it gets frustrating. So yeah, you're, you may think you're bugging. You're, it's only us coming out. So that, the county can answer a phone dispatch up. It's not a big deal. Because it's not, we, we're, we are, we're sitting over here running radar because that's a complaint too. We don't know someone's playing on the docks at the canal at ten-thirty.
Chief. Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if this is something that is due to the end. I've never been to a meeting before, but um, as far as speeding, I'm here about something at Harbor Estates. Is that something that I would bring up now?
No.
No, okay.
Probably the Republican.
I wasn't sorry.
Probably the Republican.
That's fine, thank you.
All right, anything else for the chief? All right, thanks, sir. We're going to the city manager's report.
Good evening, mayor council and residents of Delaware City. I have a short report this month, um, an update on the community center HVAC replacement. I know I'm tired of hearing about that project. Uh, I met with representatives from AECOM and Keystone to discuss the path forward regarding the HVAC system repairs, as well as to negotiate a call sharing agreement for the new expansion. I'm currently reviewing the original contracts the city signed to help determine responsibilities for the cost increases. Additionally, I emphasize the need for temporary cooling and lead. Community Center insisted that Keystone provide a portable AC unit for the gym throughout the summer. And we're able to install that last week, so there is AC in the gym. In the meantime, we authorize Amorport to begin work so that the project is not delayed further while we continue to determine who will ultimately be responsible for the associated costs. The Clinton Street paving project. As I mentioned last month, the bids for the Clinton Street paving project came in significantly higher than expected. After we provided additional information, AECOM revised the bid, but the cost still exceeded our planned budget. To move forward, we made some necessary adjustments to bring the project within the available funding. A new bid reflecting these changes is currently being prepared, and we expect it to be ready for release next week. So we'll put that out to bid next week. Just a reminder, we are currently seeking new members to serve on the Board of Ethics, Board of Health, and the Tree Commission. So if you're interested in getting involved, please reach out to Town Hall to get more information. Over the past two weeks, I attended two meetings at the Delaware City Refinery to discuss the recent emissions release. I took the opportunity to learn as much as I could about the incident, and I appreciate the refinery's transparency in explaining what occurred, why it happened, and the steps they're taking to both address the issue and improve communication moving forward. Uh, I am proud to share that I'll be serving as a board member on the refinery's CAP Community Committee. The committee is dedicated to strengthening communication between the refinery and residents in nearby neighborhoods. Its goal is to gather meaningful community input and help improve the refinery's communication efforts, ensuring timely and accurate updates about refinery operations and any potential impacts to the community. The community committee's first meeting is expected to take place the week of June twenty-third. Uh, I also just put in here that I've had the pleasure of attending two incredible weekends of Juneteenth celebrations in Delaware City, hosted by the Juneteenth Committee. It's been such a meaningful experience, and I encourage everyone to come out and take part in the remaining events planned this week. And then the Juneteenth Committee will give you more details. Uh, I attended the June second Planning Commission meeting, the June fourth Elvercity Refinery Special Cap Meeting, June tenth Delaware City Refinery Cap Meeting, and the June eleventh Budget Workshop.
All right, any questions for the city manager?
Nope.
Paul?
Yes.
The corrections to the community center. Does that involve them putting a separate unit over the gym to take care of it, since that was the main issue?
It's not a new unit, no.
And then I go put a separate unit over it?
No.
That would have been the simplest fix.
It is, it is three new um, intakes in the gym, or outputs in the gym.
Okay.
But the unit is going to remain the same. They said it is capable.
Better.
Yes.
And that they have, they have to expand what's there. They, they undersized it unfortunately, so. That's what did the debate spend going back and forth. Anything further for the city manager? All right, city solicitor report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few items on tonight's list. Well, I've worked on the legislative matter for tonight. Uh, there's also an executive session matter to discuss at appropriate time tonight. I did go to the Planning Commission meeting, which I'm sure we'll hear about further. Uh, the RV park did come up at the meeting, and we're taking a look into potential change to that plan, minor in terms of our, uh, the term of operation, because this is past five years ago. Remember, it was nine months operation, March to November.
All right.
Day.
Well, six months you can only be there, but there's a March to November timeframe. And so they're looking to expand that possibly, and we're just looking into that now, but that was presented at the last planning session meeting. And that's all I have to say.
All right, anything for this listener? All right, thanks, sir. We'll be doing the finance report this evening. Janet has um, unfortunately, been experiencing some health issues. She was hospitalized, but we'll let her get out. She's going to be out for probably about a week herself, so we'll, we'll do the uh, this month's finance report, the next month, but we will be moving forward under the proprietary business to uh, introduce the FY twenty-six operating and capital budgets for, for consideration. Uh, appointments, announcements, and communications. I have no appointments this evening. So open the floor to any commissioners or organizations that want your report. Tim?
Ben Dillaplane, chair plan. Did you guys get the memo?
I think you got it.
Okay. Uh, one of the things we resolved in planning this month was we'll start doing a synopsis for you guys. So you had your four mayor councils. Uh, about a year or so back, when the vet compass was still on the board, uh, council. Uh, we had an incident where nothing, something couldn't proceed because she had not been able to ascertain whether we decided a plan. That meaning it would have to have waited for minutes to be approved and roll over into the next mayor council meeting. So the purpose of the synopsis is to give you guys heads up as to what we did, in case you have something present. Okay? I'm going to do this going forward every month. Sorry, I didn't think of it before. I probably should. In regards to the past meeting, uh, we passed some variances on the, uh, tear down and redo of the garage for going on Washington Street. And uh, we also did your request concerning Brittany's use of the zoning enforcement. She has a method that she has been using impromptu. Uh, this is what she had to say, and decided that looked well. Uh, it's both practical and economic. So suggesting there was to proceed with it. Uh, let her do it that way, maybe formalize it, so will. The other thing we brought up was that, um, since more often than not, more often than we'd like to see, improvements on houses happen over weekends when no one's paying attention. In light of this, we would like to see that if it does not already exist, that we do a ordinance requiring a permit being substantially displayed. Front door, window, temporary power pole. So if anyone has any question as to whether or not what's going on here is legit, they can look at the permit and uh, you know, our police going by would not give no if it was legitimate or not unless they called the city manager. So if that does exist, it's something I think we should do. Item three that we covered was a discussion with Ty Burbridge and uh, Chris Sacken about Bluewater. Bluewater would like to talk about um, staying open over here. And they presented some issues as to why that, they thought that was a good idea. This is something, it was not a formal discussion, it was just a discussion, not a proposal. Uh, something we're going to have to look at in the future as to how to deal with it. As resolved that night, we, the city solicitor and the city manager were going to look into the flood plain restrictions that were a consideration at the time all things were decided, like five years ago at the point. As it stands now, uh, Bluewater can proceed unmolested if they change nothing. If they change anything, it's got to go back through the process. And that's about it. So I'm sorry you guys couldn't get this off us. I just. We will need to continue to spell the law for a little bit. I hope you find it.
Can I add something today, sir?
Something again.
Um, Mayor Johnson had asked us to look into um, as, rather than hiring a zoning officer, um, they had a, 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 writing this report. And I think that that had to be brought up because that's what, that's what I understood the question you asked last, last, last month.
Yeah, there, there was a proposal to um, there was a proposal by the code enforcement officer to, what was it, for Brittany?
Zoning officer.
For a zoning officer. And my, my question was, is, because we kicked that back to the planning and zoning commission.
She's being the principal zone control. Um, code enforcement people being one call. And if she's not available, maybe they'll also make, I don't know. It's up to you.
Any other commission or organization?
Um, Paul, can I speak for Randy from the refinery?
Yep.
Um, she was, Randy was not able to be here tonight at the council meeting. Today is the refinery's annual charity golf event. But she did ask me to present this three thousand dollar donation on behalf of the refinery to George Dudley in the Delaware City Food Closet.
Oh, yeah.
And I just said, on behalf of the food closet and myself, I just want to offer our gratitude to the refinery for their continued support. Donations like this are essential to keeping this local food closet running and ensuring we can continue to serve those in need in our community.
Oh, thank you, Randy.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Just letting you guys know that this three thousand dollars here is, feeds twenty-five people twice a month, three months. It's costing me about a thousand dollars a month to give them cereal, egg, and milk to our twenty-five families. That's what, this is three, this is three months' work. Uh, I have to beg. Thank you, Randy. Thank you. All right, Juneteenth. Mike, just stay on. Sure we have a report for Juneteenth?
We have, we're, it's almost over, yes. We have had so many events, and they have been absolutely wonderful, and I have to, I have to point out first of all that our library has been exceptional, is absolutely exceptional. The variety of programs, the number of programs, the number of people who've come. I mean, it's been truly wonderful. And I keep thinking, just about every day as we do this, we are about as polarized in this country as we've been since the Civil War right now. And yet, we come together, people who sometimes don't even like each other, and we do things like this. And if we're going to save democracy in this country, that's the kind of thing that's going to happen. So I'm, I'm just so proud of the many, many people who have been involved in Juneteenth this year. We had the shared heritage of our, at least five documented USCT who dreamed of freedom and went off to fight for it. And then waited a hundred years before they got the right to vote. We've got a long way to go, but we're getting there together. And so, thank you. And I also especially want to mention that the Weekly has been very, very generous with us. And just to show that, uh, at one of our events, people put down their, where they were from. And half the people came to Delaware City and half the people came from elsewhere, including New Jersey. So, thank you, and thank you all, and we'll see you Thursday and beyond.
Over to you, man.
Just that we have an immediate schedule for July tenth at six o'clock in the morning.
Over to the guard.
Um, Mary's already mentioned, we still have several more events held at the library this week, and even one next week in the adult art program. Um, but the other thing I want to plug tonight is the summer reading program. It's for kids, it's for adults, but I would really encourage you to enroll your kids, keep up their literacy skills over the summer. It's really important. Your teachers in the fall will thank you. Um, it's one right here. Well, thank you. Um, and then, uh, we also have several art programs. I left them on the back, flyers on the back. Our summer reading program theme is Color Our World, so we're doing several art programs that will go on throughout the summer and beautify our community center.
All right, thank you. All right, let's see. Anybody from the fire company here? See anybody? Anybody from Main Street? Uh, HPC, anything? Any other organization or commission? All right, final call. All right, I'll move on. Before we go into new business, final call on any item on the public hearing before I close the public hearing. Other workshop, food trucks in C one, or the operating or the capital budgets. Any, anybody want to comment or questions for the other items? All right, concludes the public hearing. Move on to new business. First order of business is introduction and first regional ordinance twenty-five dash zero six one six zero three related to chapter fifty-one. Article three, section fifty-one dash forty-five for mobile food vendors. I'm going to turn this over to the solicitor just to highlight the, uh, the changes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, there are basically three changes to this existing ordinance that I wanted to bring to everyone's attention. Uh, the first one in section fifty-one forty-five is regard to ice cream trucks. They're currently uh, an exception to the rule, but under this order, we put them under the rule with everybody else essentially. Uh, so essentially, going forward, ice cream trucks are not fitted into C ones except unless they fall under one of the provisions of, of a food vendor. With one key exception I want to point out, and that is some ice cream trucks purchased a one-year license as January. With one key exception I want to point out, and that is, some ice cream trucks purchased a one-year license as January one to January one. So essentially, we can't take that from them, but they will not be able to get that type of license in the future. So, they finish out this year and that's the end of that, uh, permitted action under the existing ordinance. So if this passes tonight, it will prohibit ice cream trucks in the C1 unless they fall under one of the other exceptions, and there's two exceptions or clarifications in the existing code. One of them is that, um, mobile food vendors may be permitted in the C1 zoning district for city events, which is always clear, but then we, as a clarifying language to say, and events approved by the city, like June teeth and things like that. So, that was just for clarification. In addition, uh, fifty-one forty-five two, two I, basically states that mobile food vendors will be permitted in the C1 for private events associated with businesses in the C1 so long as a mobile food vendor is not open to general public. Because there is a, someone has a business in the C1 and they have a private, they have a, uh, mobile food vendor come to service their customers only. And so, council is considering saying, okay, that's okay as long as you don't serve the general public. And so, very generally, we spoke about this earlier, what happens if someone violates that? So I voted, I wrote up some just very general language for discussion tonight, and that says, if a business engages a mobile food vendor for a private event and the mobile food vendor sells products to the general public, the business shall be subject to the following penalties. So, for our first offense, a six-month suspension of having a mobile food vendor service a private event. For a second offense, a one-year suspension from having a mobile food, uh, vendor service a private event. And for a third offense, a permanent bar from having a, uh, mobile food vendor service a private event. We could do anything we want with that, but basically wanna let people know if they're taking advantage of this exception to the rule, that there are pretty serious penalties to violating that. So that's just an idea, but for discussion purposes. Those are basic, those are the three changes that are in the ordinance.
All right, thank you. All right, I'll look forward to discussions. Keep in mind a motion tonight is just gonna be for the introduction and first reading. We'll have to get to a second reading next month and also have a public hearing before the meeting next month, before this, the final move takes place.
So, I'm waiting. Get a physical copy with the red lines and the updated language next month.
Yes.
If we approve the first reading tonight.
Correct, correct.
So tonight will just be the introduction and first reading without any discussion, without discussion in the public hearing principle.
Okay, make the motion for first reading and introduction, ordinance number twenty-five zero six one six dash zero three. Leading to mobile food vendor licenses.
I'll second.
All right, motion second. Any further discussion? Not a lot of use in favor?
Aye.
Pooed. All right, motion's carried. Uh, second order of business is we need to appoint a member of council to serve under the health, trying to get this committee. Uh, we, we've had a committee, it hasn't been very active. I'm trying to get this committee re-engaged, um, and go over some quality of life issues in, in town and also meet routinely and bring things back to council. So, I'm looking for someone to volunteer to serve under, or develop.
I don't want the board experience.
They haven't had any unfortunately, so.
I know you said you still have a committee I didn't have.
Yeah, they're still a committee, but they, they haven't met, um, I, I think they would like to at least meet at a very, very meaningful, at least quarterly, um, five monthly, and anything is better than, you know, right now, honestly.
The code says they should meet once, every two months.
Thank you, Jeff. Every two months. Thank you, buddy. We have two people on the, um, oh, she never agrees. We have two people to volunteer, Brittany. I don't think there's anything in the charter that really concludes two people from service, is that correct?
Uh, the way that it reads is one member shall be the council per, be a councilperson and in charge of board health. One member should be a doctor licensed with the state of Delaware if available, and all members shall be citizens of Delaware City.
But I think, I think we're, if we wanna exceed, if we wanna exceed the, uh, charter, we can put two council people on, correct? We don't have to.
Yes, good.
Okay.
Then one of them's gonna have to, they're gonna have a vote to see who's heading it.
All right, so if somebody wants to entertain a motion to appoint Councilman Roberts and Councilwoman Dillbloom to board it up.
I'll entertain a motion to appoint Councilwoman Roberts and Councilmember Dillbloom to the board of office.
I'll second it. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Pooed. All right, motion's carried. Item number thirty, discussion on over to Main Street. I asked for this to be thrown in the agenda, um, give everybody an update. Who wasn't here this month, there were some concerns brought forward about the Main Street organization, um, some tax status, um, probably some free status, audits, that, those type of things. If you just go over very briefly what I've known since that meeting, I've asked for an opinion from the city solicitor to see exactly what legal standing the city has between Delaware City and Delaware City Main Street. Um, it's, it hasn't always been clear, and it seems to go back to when I was on council and Mark Tore was the president. I, I asked for basic funding, so it was back then. I was told that they didn't have to provide it because they were not affiliated with the city, so I asked for legal opinion from our solicitor to see exactly where we stand. I did ask for our city manager to sit down with the president of Main Street to go over some of these concerns and not allow Brittany to share, uh, the results at that meeting. And finally, my, my opinion, and of course it's gonna depend on what recommendation or the legal opinion of the city solicitor. But regardless of all that, my opinion is we at a minimum should put a MOU together, a member animal understanding between the city and Main Street and, and spell out what our relationship exactly is with that organization, what our expectations are for that organization. Um, to be able to move forward comfortably, um, and everybody's crystal clear on what the relationship is and just get rid of all that ambiguity and nobody really knows what the, what the relationship is, so. I guess I will turn it over to the solicitor to give his legal opinion on what the standing is between the city and, and Main Street, and I mean, just go from there.
Yeah, so we've got a, if we're gonna can all of this, we don't see a direct legal connection between them, but we definitely see an association that's been created so people have the impression that they're, they are connected. As Mayor stated, uh, we believe the best thing to do at this point is to create a situation where it's very clear either we're gonna be connected or not. And if we're gonna go forward in some cooperative way, then there's gotta be some very strict guidelines as to what that means as far as having a public meeting and notifying people within the city as to what's happening. Uh, but at this point, uh, we don't necessarily see a legal connection, but, uh, I think some things have been made by council in terms of if there's going to be a continuation of this idea that there is a relationship, that that relationship needs to be formalized so that, uh, it's very clear what's happening and what their obligations are of who would be involved with that.
All right, sounds good. Brittany, wanna share anything from the meeting?
Yeah, so, um, I asked him to meet and discuss some of the recent concerns that got brought up, and, uh, I asked him in an effort to increase some transparency, would he be willing to post the organization's five oh one C three status documentation as well as tax or financial records on the website? I think that would go a long way, um, with addressing some of the concerns. He agreed he would post those. Uh, I also asked him to, uh, hold a public board meeting and appoint new board members. Um, he, it let me know the board members are appointed for one year. They haven't reappointed board members in quite some time. So I did ask him to hold a public meeting and appoint new board members, which he also agreed to vote. I asked him to notify the city once that meeting date is scheduled. Have not been given a meeting date as of yet. That was, that was the meeting.
How long did you have this meeting?
Two weeks ago.
I mean, what I would like to see is similar to what the city does with the website. I'd like to see the, you know, the president on there, maybe a picture, a welcome message. I'd like to see a picture of this from all the board directors. I'd like to see your budget on there. Mission statement, all that type of stuff in this, in full transparency, but I, I think what I'd like to do is I'd like to be able to approve the city manager to start drafting the, a draft MOU, bring back to council next month for final approval. I would certainly like council to send ideas or suggestions to put into this MOU, we can finalize it next month, and then either Main Street, regardless of who's running Main Street, either Main Street meets this criteria for the city or they don't. If they don't, then we're, we're gonna be faced with we start our own Main Street under the city umbrella that we fully control. And move forward from there. That's my recommendation, and like I say, I'll open it forward to council, but I would like to make a motion or amount of motion, I'd like for council to consider a motion to allow the city manager to bring a draft MOU back next month for consideration with all the ideas from members of council and members from the public. I'll open it forward for consideration, discussion.
What do you guys think?
Well, being a business owner in Delaware City for fifteen years, uh, I feel that I occasionally do a project with Main Street, uh, when George and I do our Santa photo shoot every year for Christmas. And that is the only contact I have with Main Street whatsoever. Uh, we, the only time I've ever been to a meeting of business owners in town is when I have found out about it and crashed the meeting myself because, you know, I'm a business owner, I should be invited to these meetings. I only know of one that I've been to in fifteen years, so I'd like to see them at least pull us business owners together so we have a chance to talk to each other, find ways that we can support each other, uh, whether it's through events or just meetings, uh, give each other some support. So, I would like to see a better support base from Main Street for our Delaware City business owners.
Anybody else? George?
Oh, I'd like to see, I mean, the working relationship with Main Street. I believe, you know, maybe you're talking back on the same page at my meetings and, you know, you're everybody very happy. Question? Yes, will we be able to determine whether the five oh one C is still in force or dropped?
Online it appears that it is not active.
Did you ask him about that?
He says that it is, so I asked him to please provide that documentation on the website as well as any financial documents or tax documents. They, he did say that they are not required to do audits?
Well, if he doesn't have his five oh one C proper, that means that Main Street wouldn't we have to start our own?
Well, that's what I say. We have no, right now, we have no legal standing, or we have no enforcement over Main Street. The way it stands right now, they're, they're moon independent, five oh one C three, so-called, I don't know, I haven't researched it. Absent an MOU, there's nothing we can do. We put this MOU together to say, you have to provide this, 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 and we're gonna be recognized. That's what we're trying to do. Absent that, or absent us to be able to, you know, come to an agreement on an MOU, ultimately, the other decision or other choice will be get a committee of the city. Yes.
Uh, yeah, I have a question. I, I actually looked it up before we moved here. And, um, there is, as you know, an organization called Main Streets. It's a national organization.
Yes.
And, uh, Delaware City is actually listed as an affiliate.
Right.
However, um, what, they define what affiliates have to do, and it appears that they're not being done, and in fact, the website is a dead website. It's, it's for sale. Um, so.
The Main Street website?
The, the one that's on the national, uh, Main Street.
There's one, wanted to visit ID City or something like that, that's the one that's active, I believe.
Yeah. They, he actually has a very nice website, but it's not the one that's on the national organization website. So, my question is, when we say, uh, it's a Main Street organization, are we saying that it's an organization that we're going to call a Main Street organization? Or are we saying that it is an organization that does in fact have an affiliation with the national organization following its rules and regulations?
That's what we have basically written down, is they fall under Main Street America or whatever it's called.
Main Street America, yes.
Then there's, there is another one locally at the state level, it's called Delaware on Main, that's like a small business association. That, that offers up low-income loans and grants and stuff like that.
Right.
Um, but they've always been standalone on their own five oh one C three, they never fall under the city. The city doesn't support them financially. We just are a cooperating partner that hosts our events and work together to bring economic development to the city. That's what's supposed to happen. Um, unfortunately, we're in the situation we're in now where we have to make a decision whether we're gonna continue to recognize them as a standalone, or do we bring them under the city umbrella? And that involves, um, it's gonna involve more work for Brittany, it's gonna involve more work for Jen, and I'm not opposed to that. I'm, I'm, I'd rather be legally compliant and not even have a, a direct association if some of these things are not a hundred percent, you know what I'm saying? So.
Thank you.
Yes.
I just have a question. Are, is Dragon Run and Main Street affiliated?
I don't know.
You mean Dragon Park building?
Dragon Run, I won't say.
Absolutely not. Tell us about, tell us about the different five oh one C number and everything.
Uh, there was a, there was a property law, maybe next door, that's under, that's under the Friends of Dragon Run, L L City, which was done through Main Street, but I don't have any, any information on it at all.
But does this, does Delaware City, um, subsidize Dragon Run?
No.
Yeah.
That's subsidized in Newcastle County.
Okay.
So they were four hundred years ago, Newcastle County gave the city an option years ago, probably back in the sixties and seventies. They put a county park down here. They decided not to do a county park, so they put the Dragon Run district down here, so they're subsidized in Newcastle County in lieu of a county park.
Thank you, yeah, permission.
Yeah.
I get, I get the nickel for every hundred dollars of your house assessment in the county. Everybody dollars, that's what we get a nickel for.
I, I didn't, I.
That, that, that's the way it works, I wanted to be clear, it's totally legal, so.
All right, any, any other question?
Proposal for Brittany to receive information, create an MOU, seems like the direction we need to go, get an understanding of what we as council and what we as citizens are looking for out of Delaware Street, uh, Delaware City Main Street. So we have an understanding of this is what we're looking for, and if they can give that to us, great, if they can't, then we have to address other steps.
All right, and just to be clear, Brittany would just be gathering the information, ultimately, the MOU will be done through our legal, legal council. Jen?
I just wanna share some, a little bit of background. We did have Delaware City Area Business Association back when I was younger. My mother was the president of that.
Mm-hmm.
And that was where the business owners met, like how you all are describing, sporting events, town events, crisis events, et cetera.
Yep.
Then we had the Main Street, the Main Street USA, we had the Main Street organization. And eventually, the DCABA kind of trailed off, because Main Street was supposed to be supporting that downtown development, but it, we decided, the town decides to raid, you know, not legally from Main Street. We could go back to a model of the business association.
Yeah, understandable.
Or a model of like, trust the agency with the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, understandable, understandable.
As a, just a comment, as a new business owner, I think there's, there's definitely a need for that. There's a lot of potential and things that could happen to bring, like I said, bring all the businesses together to support each other, have different events. I haven't seen any of that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, I, I don't think we'll want to abolish Main Street, 'cause I mean, there's so many benefits to that being part of the Main Street program. There's resources they provide, there's grant opportunities. It's just that we need to revitalize what's already here, but unfortunately, to do that, we need the person who's in charge of it now to open up and share the books, share the financials, share a lot of information, because it's just been swept under the rug and not been transparent. So, I hopefully Brittany can get through to the question of Main Street and work through them and have a meeting with people, get involved. Um, I don't even know who's on the board anymore. I think Dave, you were on the board for a while, and I don't know, when you were on the board last, who was on the board, ten years ago? Ten years ago, yeah. So, I wanted to tell you. I mean, you've been an active board.
I don't even have, he's on the board.
I appreciate your time, it's, I don't think anybody up here, myself included, would ever consider doing away or abolishing Main Street. I mean, it's too important. I mean, it's too important to the city. Too important to the business district. We just need to figure out how to do it and how to do it in full transparency and get more people involved so we can do more events and more activity for the city.
I've had this concept for the last two or three years. The one thing that would benefit Delaware City would be a central entity that would provide basic administration and coordination for all of these individual groups we have who are doing events. There are certain elements of that group leadership, which probably is duplicated group by group by group. If it only handled under the auspices of one entity, it could greatly increase the effectiveness of the groups. Perhaps be able to save money by combining resources and reduce the workload on all of our awesome volunteers. And I, and I've long thought that Main Street or something like that, or an entity that was owned by the town would be a good place to start in bringing that kind of efficiency to what we do.
Okay. I, I mean, hearing this.
Penny, is the first night still in the books with Main Street, Chief? Towards our concern?
Yes.
I mean, is, we're, we're still doing the first night?
National Day of.
National Day of. First night was, was, uh...
I'm sorry, yeah, National Day of, coming up in some time.
We should do a first night, too.
I mean, hearing everything.
Three events with them, right? First night?
First night would be New Year's Eve.
August, what's, what's it named?
National Day of.
National Day of, August.
So hearing all the feedback and everything that I'm hearing, I mean, I, I, it's just my opinion that we, we should probably put a MOU together and spell out what the relationship is, the city, what our criteria is, what we like to say with transparency, what documents we like to say. And that way, even though we're indirectly associated, our confidence level can go up and say that we're associated with them in good esteem.
So I guess my question though, still, so I went to Tim and I, I asked for those things to happen. If they don't, I still am not clear on what authority we have, like, like Jill was saying, we don't want to do away with Main Street. But how do we make that happen? How do we make that happen?
Well, we, we don't, we don't. At that point, if there, if we can't come to an agreement on terms of an MOU as it exists today, then unfortunately, Main Street would have to come under the city's umbrella. We would still have a Main Street, would have to come under the city's umbrella, and we would basically be responsible for pointing it, functioning of Main Street.
We would create our own organization, basically, and hopefully, it's going to be something that everybody embraces. So, I mean, I looked at the website, they have not, there was iron housing for various businesses on there. Hopefully, if everybody unites behind a common purpose to have economic development corporation, so to speak, with Delaware City, that all the businesses would join there, and then it would just overwhelm what's happening now, which doesn't seem to be a whole lot. But it'd basically be creating the other, grow the organization, uh, by doing it such a way that you get a consensus of people who will get behind that, so it'll clearly be the method going forward.
Yeah, I understand.
Still, it's a Main Street organization, though. Not a, not a separate city committee, but a Main Street committee. Through Main Street.
I don't know what benefits you get from, you know, I'd be able to see. A nation in America, does that give you any value? Or if it does, maybe we can sort that.
There's grant money and things that you can get by being a Main Street affiliate, so... That's, but, and then my question then goes into if there is no board and there's no appointments and there's no, is any, is, if no one's been appointed, is there, you know, how, how do you?
That's where the transparency is going into the, I mean, it exists, but nobody has faith in it.
Like, is there, if it's not a president, is there a board if nobody's voted on this in years?
That's what we're all trying to figure out.
Finding that out. And I think that's where I think there is.
All right.
Well, no, what I'm saying is, is when we do this MOU, the MOU is going to say, the city wants to know, and the city wants on Main Street's website, who is the president, who is the board, who want the minutes, who want the agenda of these meetings on there? That's what the purpose of this MOU is. We want to see your 501(c)(3) status. We want to see your, your tax return status. That's where the MOU would come into play. And the city would dictate what criteria we're comfortable with.
Holds them accountable.
That's the only way that we can do it legally, because right now, there's nothing we can do.
When he doesn't, or if he does not provide that information, can we then appoint someone?
We'd have to create a city committee, yes. We'd have to create a city Main Street organization.
There are still a certain, uh, there's a bucket of resources contained in the House that's on the edge of town. And I assume because Main Street, I think contributes some financials, like the music in the park or whatever, so there must be some financial bucket of resources there. One question I would have is, oh, does, because that, that money was originally penalty money from, uh,
Tax, tax.
Yeah, so, uh, does the city have, because it was essentially contributed to the city through the Main Street organization, does that money belong to the city or does that money belong to Main Street entity that is here in town?
I have no idea. I, I was, this is way before I even got on council. I don't even know how Main Street became in control of this six hundred and, I think eighty-seven thousand dollars that was supposed to go back into ecotourism.
So what I, what I understood too in that meeting is that some of that money went towards purchasing that, the home, and then there's a large parcel of land that was intended to be developed into like a, a fishing pier or kayak launch or things like that. They still have that land, but it doesn't sound like they have the funds left to do any projects with it. They also, I, I saw what I was saying, there was also money spent. At one time, there were employees that were paid under Main Street, is what I was told, that some of that money went. But the rest was used to purchase this parcel, which runs kind of along Madison Street behind the, you know, and with the intention that the city would put money, I guess, to it to, to create the ecotourism, the fishing dock, the kayaks. That was my understanding of the six hundred.
Yeah, I don't know. I know that was the intent of buying this house and this property. They wanted to do canoe launches and stuff like that in the dragon, which I don't know if the state even permitted that. I'm not sure, but that was the intent of it. I, I don't know. And there is, I mean, Dave, going back to your comment, there is a mechanism for somebody to head up and, and run an organization full-time, but that, when they need full accreditation, they have to have a full-time paid administrator, and I just don't think they have the funding to support that. Yes, Mary?
I was just going to say that, uh, Main Street America does provide technical support. Talking about the MOU, what you go into it, and that sort of thing. At least they used to and probably still do provide, uh, technical support.
All right, any further discussion? There's a motion in the second. Any further discussion?
Did it get sway? Also.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion? So the motion is to be allow Brittany to solicit input from council, the public, and business owners for an aim which to give to the city, solicit or decree an MOU or be brought back to council for consideration next month.
Correct. Now, the question is, do we have to stand up for next month? That's pushing her. Once again, she has a lot on her plate as it is. Can we make, is it necessarily next month? Can we make it to next month? Leave it.
Was Jan out there?
I can shoot for next month.
We can just beat for next month.
I'll shoot for it.
I don't think it's going to be a hold on. I mean, and obviously, my personal opinion, I'd like to get this resolved sooner than later. You know, it's just been hanging out there forever, and it seems like, uh...
I did get a contact with the Division of Small Business, so I'm going to try to get in touch with her. She's very hard to get so good, but if I can, her, uh, maybe she can be helpful with this today.
All right, no further discussion. I will entertain a vote, what is your favor?
Aye.
Vote. I think Lucy's carrying. All right, we'll go into item number four, which is Resolution twenty-five zero-six-one-six-zero-one, which is adopting the operating budget for FY twenty-six. And just to give you guys a quick update for those who wasn't here for the hearing, we had a budget workshop, um, last week. We had another budget workshop scheduled for this evening at five-thirty. Unfortunately, Janet, after our workshop, they just kind of, Janet went into the hospital to come down with her illness. I don't really know all that details, but, um, she is not available. She's probably going to be out of work for another week, so we had to put a, basically, a tentative budget together. So we have some crew by July first, and then we're going to give back and possibly amend the budget after July first. After we get some hard numbers and everything prepared. But we went off of the numbers that we were confident that we had in revenue to match the expenditures, so we do have a balanced budget that's going to be presented tonight. I'll move over a couple entirely. So the budget increase from FY twenty-six is only one percent increase for FY twenty-six, which we're trying to be as fiscally responsible as possible. This budget doesn't include increased hours for a code enforcement officer. Currently only have a code enforcement officer working, what, one day a week, Brittany?
Right now, yes, we differ on the curve.
Yeah, so on the pay card, that's going to increase the coverage to two days a week. We had to increase the pay rate for the city secretary. That has not been increased in, what, five, five, four, five years?
Four.
Four, four years, so we had to bump that up slightly. Chief Henderson did bring a proposal forward to kind of bring our officers in line, better in line with, um, some of the other state agencies. So we give you an idea where we are right now. We're, we're starting salaries at fifty-six thousand, which we're at the bottom third of all agencies in the state. There's only one Newcastle County agency below us, which is the town of Townsend, and they only have one officer. They started fifty-two thousand dollars a year. Proposal is to bring us up to sixty-two, I believe, sixty-four. So it's going to put us kind of a little bit in the middle of the range. That's going to help us with, um, you know, attrition rate, retention, keeping our officers. We, I can tell you right now, Chief, that must be pretty cheap, but we have other agencies trying to recruit our officers all the time, buy out their contracts. So it's going to help us keep our officers, which is step one. Step two, after we approve this operating budget, we're going to continue with a series of public workshops and meetings to discuss the path forward with the police department. So what we're doing this evening is to stabilize in the department right now, so we don't lose any bounty, kind of slow down the attrition rate. The next step is going to look at numbers. What do we need to do to increase the police force? What do we need to do? I've been talking about this forever. I'm tired of talking about it. I'm going to kind of put some hard numbers together. What do we need to do to get a twenty-four seven police force? And I want to do that through the public. You know, we won't have a lot of options, you know, we have a pretty good amount of reserves put away, which I think could, to kind of keep that intact as much as possible. If we have to go for a tax increase, how much? What does that tax increase look like? What does the public want? Because we, we want to hear from the public. I think it's, I think we're well beyond the need for a twenty-four seven police force. But we need to look at numbers and what does that reflect as far as our, our budget's concerned. I believe that was it, the highlights of the budget. The other thing too is we're going to have to look, when we go through these workshops, we're going to continue to look at what we can do for the senior exemption. That's another area we talked about in the workshop that we need to take a look at, so. Even though we're proposing and operating in the capital budget this evening, there's a possibility that it will be amended moving forward. Once we get hard numbers and we know as I go where we're at and we get through this, um, you know, we still got to get through this reassessment, see what happens, assess our revenue and all that other stuff, so. That's the plan forward, based upon where we're at right now. We're still in a pretty good position financially. We're still on pretty solid footing with our reserves, with the balanced budget that we have. There are always to keep it that way. And make sure we're able to sustain city services without a massive tax increase. Nobody wants to raise taxes, but I want to take it back to the public and see what the public wants. If you want more police covers, this is what is going to cause. And go from here. That's, that's the plan forward. So... The motion would be to adopt Resolution twenty-five zero-six-one-six-zero-one in the amount of two million, two hundred sixteen thousand, seven hundred twenty-four dollars and thirty-five cents. That will act as the FY twenty-six operating budget, which will go into effect July one.
Make a motion to accept, uh, adopt Resolution twenty-five dash zero-six-one-six dash zero-one for the operating budget of FY twenty-six for the amount of two million, two hundred sixteen eight thousand, seven hundred twenty-four dollars and thirty-five cents.
All right, motion in second. Any further discussion? All right, non-voting in favor? Apoled. All right, motions carried. I want to sign the resolutions around your signature. All right, the next order of business is Resolution number twenty-five zero-six-one-six-zero-two, operating, adopting the capital budget for FY twenty-six. So basically, what Brittany did is she took all of the, the balance of all our current capital projects. We did not factor in, she did, she applied for a couple of state grants that haven't been awarded yet. We did not factor that into this number, so that will be part of, when we come back to do an amendment. Hopefully, we get those awards or at least a partial award. We can include those numbers into the amended budget when we move forward. Uh, we were also given three hundred fifty thousand dollars through CTF, which is the Community Transportation Fund, that's due to Delta, um, for some paving prize that we're going to, uh, pay part of the parking lot here for the fire company. We have not received that money yet either, so we didn't factor that into this, uh, number yet either, so. When we come back for an amendment, what's it doing? All those numbers will be included. So this motion will be to accept Resolution twenty-five zero-six-one-six-zero-two in the amount of one million, eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred ninety-two dollars and thirty-six cents. That will serve as the FY twenty-six capital budget that will also go into effect July one.
On the motion to accept, uh, Resolution twenty-five dash zero-six-one-six dash zero-two, adopting the capital budget FY twenty-six for one million, eight hundred ninety thousand, eight hundred ninety-two dollars and thirty-six cents.
One, one million, eighty-nine thousand.
One million, eight hundred...
No, no, one million, eighty-nine thousand.
Eighty-nine...
Thousand.
Thousand, eight hundred, ninety-two dollars and thirty-six cents.
I'll second whatever number you give.
All right, just a careful, motion in second to approve Resolution twenty-five dash zero-six-one-six-zero-two in the amount of one million, eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred ninety-two hundred and thirty-six cents, which will serve as the FY twenty-six capital budget that takes place July first. Any further discussion? Voting in favor?
Aye.
Apoled. All right, motion's carried. Uh, let's see. Item number six, discussion on FY twenty-six tax assessment rule. Brittany?
Yeah, so I put this on here just to bring up, so typically, the way that we do assessment rolls and the way that our, our partner reads, is that we post our assessment rolls sixty days prior to the year. And we hold a board of appeals thirty days prior to the year. If the Newcastle County reassessments, they did not get us the reassessments until the end of last week. We're waiting for Edmunds, which is a software company, to upload those numbers into our system. So we did not have assessment rolls to post, so I talked to Slistor, and he suggested that once we receive that information, we post it right away and start to sixty days. We should hopefully have that, where we would be able to bill with a month before the meeting. But Newcastle County didn't have the breakdown of the assessment rolls. I did call to Newcastle City just out of curiosity. I did call to Newcastle City just out of curiosity how they were handling this situation. Their code, their charter does not require them to post assessment rules sixty days. So they don't have this issue. They just need to have a vital one.
No, okay.
So I just wanted to bring this to council so they understood what this process was gonna be or any questions to build to help answer any of those.
My question is, um, how's that gonna impact our revenue from between now and the time we actually bill and start receiving revenue, tax revenue?
So bills will go out later than they typically would. So we'd be about a month or so behind from when bills would typically go out and payments start coming in. They're not, tax bills are not due until September thirtieth. That's going to stay the same. So we were gonna, hopefully if we get this all posted right away, we should be able to still bill by the, by August, by the end of August. So they would still have a month before bills were due. So technically the due date is still the same. While when we bill in the beginning of July, we typically get some payments prior to September. We would probably not hit those.
So it's just, it's just an arc, a body line arc?
It's our charter. Yeah, it reads that way. Um, and like I said, I did reach out to Newcastle City to see if they were, how they were handling it and it's not written that way.
Okay. Any more discussion from the council? There's not really a way we can bill about it. So there's really no action we can take except for.
Can I ask a question? Brittany, did the county say whether or not they would be on time with their billing of the county?
I believe so, because they too can send it out in July and they are wrapping up their final. They just wrapped up their last tax payment this past week. So while there are a ton of appeals, like I, I have no idea how this is gonna go through. I know in Delaware City, we have a little less than twenty people appealing their reassessment. So those numbers are gonna change as they go through that process. But um, it sounds like they'll still prepare to bill on time.
And something we may wanna look at in the winter, when the state legislature reconvenes, we might wanna go get some charter changes. We have stuff in there that we need to clean up. So getting ready to be done for the summer. So it makes sense of doing it now. Might as well just get this together for when they reconvene in January.
I would suggest we communicate, perhaps through the city newsletter, the timing, the nights are happening. If people don't get their bill as early as they normally would, it may not generate awareness uh that they might normally have that they need to start thinking about that they need these funds.
Right, nice. That's it. We can do that.
Alright, going to member of council comments. Councilman David?
No comment.
Charlie?
The fifty thousand dollar T-Mobile grant has been submitted. I'm an eternal optimist, so I'm really hoping we get it. Uh, we can use that money to help fix some things around town.
Doggich?
Uh, from this meeting, my biggest concern right now is what's going on with Main Street. I do think, in fact, even just the name Delaware City, we have to do what we have to to get a hold and get this thing under control.
Aye, very, hundred percent.
So, yeah, I'm all about getting that thing squared away right now.
Right, Councilwoman Dillip?
Uh, yeah, I um, this week had the pleasure of enjoying a project over at Fort Dupont. Uh, through the friends of Fort Dupont, uh, they had the Urban Sketchers of Delaware over there on Sunday afternoon. It was, and it was great. There were about six people that attended. Uh, we all went to various buildings. It was about architecture and did some drawings and then got back together and sort of compared photos and, and it was just really a nice event. All levels are welcome. Uh, they're gonna be doing it again in September. So I highly recommend if you have a few hours to spare to join in fun if you're into the arts. Uh, it's a really nice program. Uh, I also attended the planning commission meeting and, and best of all, several programs for Juneteenth that were held at the library, which were outstanding. And the lineup for, I believe this is Thursday, coming Thursday, is amazing. So please don't miss that and then don't miss the uh church service on Sunday with the community lunch in the fall. It just brought so many people together and I love to see the unity between Delaware City and Fort Dupont, Harbor Estates, everyone coming together as one community. So that's really a good direction for all of us to follow. And then I also agree with the Main Street transparency. I think that needs to be addressed.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Johnson.
No further comments.
Alright, Mayor's report, I think, had pretty much covered everything with the budget, uh, increase of police uh Juneteenth. Some of us are fortunate to be off that day for those, um, that are off. I guess that, you know, please try to attend these events and make sure the city is very well represented. If you have to work during the day, there's events throughout the day. Best kept soul will be in a park from six to nine. One of the best bands around, giving a good time, good turnout. So hopefully at some point, we can get all the council together and uh represent the city with citywide. And can't say enough about the committee and all the work that's going in and putting this Juneteenth uh event together. So, um, we're not gonna meet again before the event, but I'd like to publicly thank everybody that's been involved on the committee and volunteered their time and attended all these meetings to help make uh a second annual event. It's gonna be a huge success. Thank you. Alright, we're gonna move into citizens' questions and comments. Three minutes per resident. Could you speak your name and your issue? Yes, sir.
Sorry, my backpack got off. Totally away in the square of Main Street. Something quite disturbing having happened on a veteran's day. Uh, I went to Sean, the owner of Cutting Edge. Sean Memorial Day. And Sean had been taught his queen. I instructed him how to put the flags up and down. And then on Memorial Day, Friday before, the flag was at three quarters of that. On Memorial Day itself, I had to get down and open and raise the flag in order to have best. And then at noon, put back out, put it back up again. The flag at the library never changed. I'm, should we get a committee together to do this? I mean, that's what I do for a living. I'd be glad to head it up if you want. I'd, I'd be glad to do that. But I mean, to disrespect the American flag as a veteran, kinda aggravates me.
Understood. I mean, we'll take all the help we can get. I don't know if you need a committee, but you know, usually Brittany has that on her calendar, depending on cutting edge. But you know, any help, if you'd like to volunteer, help, we certainly take any help we can get. I don't want to speak for the library. I'm sure Lori would entertain or, you know, help us as well. So.
Brittany, if anyone comes up that he can't make it, please inform me and I'll take care of it.
Mike?
Mike, Mike from twenty-nine of Washington Street. Uh, you're talking about your Main Street organization. Would it be helpful, and I'm no expert at this, if they had a mission statement?
I asked you.
I don't know if they have one or not. So that's a good question to ask. The other questions I have is, uh, can we get the town curfew posted or somehow uh advertise through our weekly, uh monthly newspapers or whatever to let these future young Americans behave themselves instead of walking our streets at two o'clock in the morning looking for worms? That's a true story. And uh, can we send get low cards to Janice if we could drop them off at the town hall? Thank you, Mr. President.
Just me?
Well, I'm Stephanie and I live in thirty-one Warkville and there's just been a ongoing problem of speeding through the stop sign that could right near a park. Um, there's a ton of kids, including my own, who are crossing the road to and from. I've stopped a couple of people just on my own. There are delivery drivers, Grubhub. Two of them are Amazon, smoking a blunt. Um, they don't care. They don't seem to care. I know the police can only do so much and, you know, not worth their time and money to be sitting there the whole time. Um, the only solution that I have thought of is a speed bump. Just to limit the amount from racing down from Seventh to get to the stop sign. So I don't know if that's anything that can be done. I don't believe, I mean, there's a lot of speeding in town and I know there's only so much we can do, but as far as that straightaway, it's at an intersection. It goes by a park. The signs don't work, but did get put up, because I've complained about this before. This is my first meeting, so I don't know what else to say. I just thought about a speed bump or a speed hump or something that kind of limits the straightaway from the main road.
Certain times of, days of the week or times of the day?
I have videos from different times, dates, all kinds of cars. Um, there's a younger kid who was informed he actually drives now, but he speeds on a dirt bike, never stops at the stop signs. I mean, I just, I can see it in my head being very detrimental if there's a kid in the intersection.
City manager, I have had conversations. Try and address the issue.
Okay, thank you.
Can I add something to her? My name's Alstair Graham, her dad. Uh, what about a red flashing light on top of the stop sign? Anything to catch the attention of these people that are not paying attention?
That's one of the.
I live, I only live one house away from her. I see it too. I, I just, somebody's gonna get hurt.
The lit stop signs was one of the options we were discussing.
I'm sorry?
The lit up stop signs were one of the options we were discussing.
I mean, I know you have your hands full. I, I'm not trying to be that guy.
That's our job.
But it's right down near the park. A kid on a bicycle not paying attention. Somebody's gonna be sad. So my daughter and I would like to really bring that up and, and like, I don't know, do whatever we can to, to do not let everybody know that this is really important to at least two of us. And uh, you know, it, I, we all have kids. You know, it could be anybody's kid. So, thank you.
Yeah. So like Mike said, we, we are looking into that and into the, we looked into lit stop signs. But um we also did discuss speed bumps on uh Seventh and Nolan Lane, where both are straightways entering Harbor Estates, where residents complain on those streets that face speed and run stop signs. Um, I think if that's something the mayor and council would like to move forward with looking into, we could do a public hearing if you guys are interested. Um, other than that, as far as stop signs here, we have been looking into more aggressive stop signs in an effort to help with speeding, but.
I'd, I'd like to see, I, I know there's a couple, I actually saw a couple when I was down in Milford. There's a couple solar um stop lights, or stop signs that have the LEDs around the perimeter and they flash. They seem to be pretty, um, and they, they get a lot of people's attention. I'd like to try that first if we could. Do we have any way to go for it? Do we have money for them or do we have grant?
So I, I'll be, are gonna try, I think it was through CTF, we're gonna try to apply.
Yeah, I was gonna say either that or municipal street or whatever we can do. I don't know how much they are, but at least get one or two of them and see how they do. Thousand? And that's not bad.
Could you keep a little presence there for a while, Chief, just to, you know,
Yeah.
remind them that it's a park in Seventh Street, just for kids and slow it down. We're not, we're not putting up with it. We don't want them on there.
Brittany, can you say?
I don't want speed bump. And if Nolan Lane is not built yet, I think we should wait off before, let's see how that house is coming, you know, actually the speed limit is with that four year homes on Nolan Lane.
When we get the CTF money awarded, if we have enough in municipal street, if you get two or three on now, we'll just deploy them wherever the chief feels. And then if they work pretty good, we'll look to get a few born.
Yep.
One of the hotspots.
Slowing down going into town and down the opposite side of the block.
Tim?
I'm gonna piggyback off of this stop sign thing. My parents live on that corner and I see it all the time. Even last night, I said stop sign, you know, driveway, that's a street stop sign. So I don't think it's visibility. I think it's just driver intent. But also Monroe Street is that sign? So it's a right angle. And when I first moved in years ago, there were two stop signs. One has disappeared over the years. These people do not stop. They just make the turn. But Monroe Street where I am is the only street shot besides Clinton Street. So they're gaining a lot of speed coming down from Solace Place and then they just bang that right turn and then these people don't stop. And there's been almost head-on collisions for years. And I would just really like that old stop sign to be back. Even though it's an L-shaped intersection, the visibility and the speed, because there are no stopping points, no, on Monroe Street, no other side street comes through. You know, there's paper streets that are sometimes talked about? They would have dropped down on Monroe, but they don't. So that's another stop sign issue. And it's just.
It's a yield.
It says yield. There's been all different signage there over the years, but it's not working. Good population, I should say. Thanks.
Chris?
Just gonna say, you know, I have a question and a comment. The question is, when and where will the RFT's chemistry be published?
Uh, I believe the news journal and then on our website.
And when will that be?
Hopefully within the next week to publish it.
Okay, the comment is a couple councils ago, maybe three or four councils ago, lodging tax was passed and adopted by, by Mayor Council of Delaware City, done an elsewhere three percent sales tax that would apply to the RV resort. Um, that's in addition to the property taxes that the city's gonna collect. So it's gonna be a significant couple hundred thousand dollar plus annual revenue toward your operating budget. So we're very optimistic connections to move this forward. So let's bring it to your question again.
Thank you.
Alright, citizens', citizens' comments, Dylan?
Uh, Dale, it's on thirty Clinton Street. Just wanna thank Mayor's Council for addressing the Main Street issue, which I've been talking about for the last two or three years. Uh, I did have a whole statement there. I'm not gonna bore you all with reading it, but I gave you a copy and I mean, there's copies over there if anything the public wants to read to feel the extent of what's going on with Main Street. Um, something's probably not important to anybody else to be, is that last meeting, the current president of Main Street has said that under my presidency, three hundred thousand dollars won't miss. So I'm kind of a nerd and I'm proud of being a nerd. So I keep a lot of files and if I say, I can say when I left was six hundred fourteen thousand, not missing. So, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Dylan. Anybody else, citizens' comments? John?
John Buckeye, thirty Clinton Street. Um, we had code red a while back for Delaware City. And um, when the refinery hasn't released, we really think the residents should be notified through code red. And we should be able to make our own decision if we wanna stay and go. Everybody has their progressive tool and we should do that. So, you know, I don't understand why, like, releasing the air or air power doesn't go to a code red.
Well, it will move forward. That's what this committee, Brittany, is on. I think the, the part of it, part of what took place this last time, we're waiting for the refinery to put out an official statement of actually what happened. So we can put out facts and not create a lot of panic and stuff like that. And that's part of what the refinery's committed to, getting us that information a lot sooner. So we can do code reds and social media and the website or whatever else we need to do. So that's one of the things we're absolutely looking into.
Okay. In reference to building permits, would it be possible to post the building permits online instead of having to walk up to someone's house when they're protesting?
I, I understand that, but also to have it posted online so people can see the blue skid building, what.
What do you mean, what, what permits are active?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yeah, I think it can be done.
And last but not least, I don't know if you're aware, Dartbus has been going up and down Clinton Street, Washington Street, uses as a train. I think that's like splat in the face if they took away. That's all I have to say.
I talked to the uh Senator about that. Yeah, we talked about it once. Okay, so one again. Alright, citizens' comments. Yes, Tim?
Tim Nolan Lane, one eighty foot clear. Few years back during the Dave Baylor administration of city manager, I questioned whether or not we had replacement uh concrete polyester plants reordered for the ones that were stolen from our seawall down the park. In the interim, uh, when we put them up, Cutting Edge has been using two-by-tens or two-by-fours. Did that affect of that, did that second? The net effect of that, the net section of the point is now six inches lower than the rest of the wall. When I asked Dave Vayler about this at the time, he finally blew me off by saying, don't order. Are they? We need to find out. Here's the thing. With climate change, the storms are getting more loud. June first, we entered hurricane season. Twenty twelve October, we got a brush ride by hurricane sand, and the backlog of water up the Delaware River reached the top of our seawall and lapped it. If those two planks or four planks are missing or short, we will have a waterfall down in the park from the river. And if you don't think that's frightening, go down there during the storm and see what the river looks like when it's up against those planks. I think we need to replace it before we get nailed by another hurricane. Okay? Thank you, President.
That should qualify, Brittany, for the, the five million we have sent over for the money we're gonna use a lot. We, we wouldn't use that one.
Yes, there's four. They were stolen, according to Dave Vayler, and there were fire traps in the park near them, supporting that in fact.
So I guess we have to lock, be able to lock them in.
Well, normally they're held in with wedges. They put them in, they drive them wedges, so the river can't liberate them open out.
Well, look into it. That's why they put that big orange garden pump right there, because even, even when the waves crash against there, they still overtake that seawall, and that's why the pump still pumps it back out.
So we don't get a six-inch gap across twenty feet of the water.
We'll take a look at it.
Hi, my name is Susan Adrian. I am a businesswoman here in town. I am concerned about the businesses that are shutting there in Delaware City. So should I be concerned? Is there anything to worry about? And then speaking of Main Street, like Len said, I've been here four years. I've only been to one meeting. And that's just me, me, technically. As far as Main Street is concerned, I have some ideas on how, not, I guess on how Main Street should be working for businesses. I've dealt with Main Street before in Dover, because I have family friends who moved a business in Dover. So I haven't really seen anything that Main Street has done for businesses, and I'm just speaking from my personal opinion. The only thing I get on Main Street is late emails, one, filling out for grants. And a lot of times on those emails get to me, I don't have enough time to even look at information or fill out any of the grants that are being proposed through the email. So if I need to, according to my, my understanding of how Main Street works, is Main Street gets a lot of, you know, enough money, and so it's be distributed to businesses, help small businesses like myself. If I need like renovation, if I have issues of, you know, just certain things, I should be able to apply for these different grants to help my business prosper. But four years, I haven't had any good, like, nothing, no good vibe from Main Street other than just the emails that I get and the one meeting that we had that, which was a great meeting, by the way. They brought in, um, people from the SBA, people from different organizations came in and had a conversation with all of us. But after that, haven't heard anything. So I'm just me, I'm, I'm really concerned about my small business surviving in Delaware City.
Thank you. Anybody else? Citizens' comments. Yes?
Diane Warren, two oh three Weaver Road. I have a question about the ARCA funds. You still have ARCA funds?
You do, yes.
Can you use that on the roads, you know, improving the roads?
You know, we only have, what, about sixty thousand left? We don't have a whole lot of that. But we, we do have, we have a plan for the roads. So we have, we have money set aside. Like I said, we just got three hundred and fifty thousand CTF, which is Community Transportation Fund through Delaware. Brittany applied for, would you apply for CRF? She applied for another two fifty that's going toward the paving projects. And then we do have, um, other money sitting there we're gonna use for paving. So the plan is to hopefully pave Clinton from second to fifth. We need to pave and do some drainage improvements on Canal Street next to the promenade. It's a pretty big issue. Once that's done, then we wanna start looking at some other areas and some side streets and stuff like that. But we, we do have a plan for, for paving.
I have another question.
Yes.
In Harper Estates, we have kids riding around, you know, flying on their little mini bikes or motorcycles. Is there anything that you can do about this? I saw, I did one clear road, and there was a yield sign on my, you know, in my house. And this one kid almost got hit by a vehicle coming up waterfall. And he was very fortunate that he didn't get hit, and he was flying.
I mean, the best thing that we can do is have more police presence through more officers. And that's the thing we wanna talk about through these next round of budget. The, the amount of officers that we have right now, they're just stretched so thin that we don't have the coverage to address these things.
And they, they need to go up on the bikes. Last weekend, they were flying. And Brittany, you lived right behind there, and you could hear them. And I mean, just flying.
They were all over town. You could hear them three in the morning.
Really?
Some of them are electric.
Right. They're what?
They're electric ones.
Yeah, but they're like zooming up and down.
If it's under ninety-nine CCs, like a low player.
It's considered a placement.
To call, I think it's called. We, well, obviously nearby, if we're working, so call and shoot them. We're aware of some of them over there. I thought it stopped, because I trusted it. But you have a neighbor that, and it stopped for a while.
So I see them on Clinton Street in front of my business just zooming by with no care of if people are walking, because Clinton, like, a lot of tourists that's in town for the ferry and everything that's going on, they just come zooming by the business with, like, no concern. And when you tell them to stop, you get cursed at.
Yeah.
Well, the best thing to do, even if you don't think, you think, I'm not gonna call nine one one, nobody's going, the time to please get here, whatever, call anyone, because that creates a backlog. That shows the need, that we need the coverage, and it shows when we're deficient and we're not gonna be able to address this issue unless we have that data. So whenever you see it, call nine one one.
We also can request grant H F, funding from state and federal agencies, if we stress it's an issue. I had some pedestrian bicycles grants a couple years ago based on that, because we were getting complaints in, but if it's not, if we didn't document it, they don't. So if you call me, we document every, every case.
Don't we already have an ordinance that says bicycles should not operate on sidewalks? We've, we've got the board.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's an ordinance. There's a sign on Canal Street, but it's nothing in the ordinance. It's a supplement.
It's another thing. My, my biggest concern is the former crash reconstruction. They don't wear, they don't even wear a bicycle. They're just out there.
And they ride up, they ride up the, the sidewalk right at you.
Are we included in the tax program? They don't give us that information.
We have officers. But, but I can get grant funding through the office. For officers to go out there and work, pedestrian, bicycles, H F, we call them. And it's not even, it's no cost to the city. It's very fun. And then we need to document it, give us, in order to get the fund.
Yield. Citizens' comments. Final call. Citizens' comments.
This is another comment, but I just wanted to publicly say thank you, Chief Henderson, for you and the team for my, the situation with my son's car. So just thank you. The very next day, car was found. You keep, you kept in contact with me, letting me know what's going on. So thank you so much.
I appreciate that. We don't like for big investigations to come our way. They're fun too, when they work out like that. While I have a floor, I wanna thank the mayor and council for supporting the police department and the residents. We've come a long way since I started in May of twenty-one. We looked for creative ways to help the officers, take home cars. I think we started with, we were one of the only agencies without a pension in the state of Delaware. Now they have pensions, and then now we got shot in the arm with their patsies in the ballpark respectable. So thank you, everyone up here for your support. City manager Loveham.
All right, appreciate you.
And the solicitor, when we need, thanks, sir.
Great. Final call. Yes?
Maybe we should consider a ordinance for like downtown and where bicycles are prohibited on sidewalks. Because that seems to be the main issue, where people are in danger of getting run over when they step out of the sidewalk.
Does that include the sidewalk going up the canal? Because a lot of the.
I know, the bicycles, the tourists ride down that. It's not supposed, it's supposed to be in the street. That's something we have to pay up, but for sure, we need to stop the zooming bicycles from going up and down the Main Street with spores on, on the sidewalk.
All right. Citizens' comments. Final call. All right, we do have some business to go into executive session, before I'm going to recess the regular meeting, so we can go into executive session. You're more than welcome to hang out. I don't know how long I'm gonna be in.